Seventh, 2024 meeting that we scheduled exactly on the same time the rolls would be in the playoffs and the Chiefs would be playing football on Monday Night Football. This is our city council meeting. Our invocation will be given by Ken Truax, elder at the East Independence Church of Christ. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
Good evening. Would you all pray with me, please? Our Father, I thank you for who you are and what you've done for us and how you've blessed us. Father, tonight we pray for peace throughout our world, but especially in the Middle East and Ukraine. Recognize that war and conflict can be a constant in our world, but we pray for peace nonetheless. Father, as the November elections are approaching, we pray that you will bless us as a nation, bless us as a city, as a state. We thank you that we live in the United States. We thank you for the opportunities, the freedoms that we have. And Father, I pray that you bless us as we approach November and that the outcome of the elections will be good and beneficial for all of us, all of us as citizens. Father, for the city workers, for the city's senior staff, for the council, I thank you for their work for us as citizens of Independence. I pray, Father, that you bless the council tonight. I pray that you bless their deliberations and the decisions that they will make. I pray that the decisions they make tonight will provide good outcomes for us as the citizens of the city. Father, I ask that you bless those who come forward to the council tonight, that as they make their petitions, as they make their presentations, that you will bless them, that you will bless their thoughts, that they can communicate clearly, and so that the council and the staff can understand what they're asking about. And so, Father, with all of these things, I pray that you bless all of us and bless the council tonight. And all these things I pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember McCandless.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Councilmember Vought.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I'd like to make a motion that we take the resolution for the I-STAR Award and the proclamations out of order and move them ahead of citizen requests.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion in a second? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the motion passes seven in favors, zero opposed. So it'll take us to Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Twenty-four, seven, six, nine is a resolution recognizing Miranda Rice, Assistant to the Director of Community Development, as the I-STAR Award recipient for October 2024. Miranda was my nomination, so I just have a few words I'd like to say about her. I cannot say enough good things about Miranda. She has been a huge help to me in learning my new role as city clerk. Her years of service with the city have given her a wealth of knowledge and experience, and she has been a perfect go-to for me when I have questions. She is always willing to help me and has taken on additional tasks outside her job to help me while I continue learning. Miranda has also been instrumental in launching our new agenda system. Her input in creating this system to fit our needs has been significant. Miranda is definitely one of those employees that you never want to lose. Thank you, Miranda, for everything that you do.
And can we have a motion in a second to vote on this?
I'll make the motion for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second for the approval of the I-STAR Award. And any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the motion carries seven in favor, zero opposed. So, thank you very much. And I just want to read this proclamation because I like it. Whereas, "The Service Recognition Program recognizes outstanding performance and exemplary acts of service by employees of the City of Independence. And whereas, an employee committee selects the I-STAR Independence Service and Teamwork Above Responsibilities Award, and the recipient for exhibiting these qualities and ideals that best represent public service. And whereas, the Service Recognition Committee has selected Miranda Rice, Assistant to the Director for the Community Development Department, as the I-STAR recipient for October 2024." So, Miranda, we want to give you great congratulations. Please come forward and receive your recognition. Thank you. And whereas domestic violence is a pervasive problem affecting individuals in every community, regardless of age, gender, economic status, race, or religion, with devastating physical, emotional, and financial consequences. And whereas, the average of one out of three women in the United States will experience domestic violence in their lifetime. And whereas, Hope House has been providing comprehensive services for domestic violence and their families for the last forty years. And whereas, over 6,000 hotline calls were answered by Hope House during the 2023 year. And whereas, by working together, we can increase awareness of domestic violence, support survivors, and promote healthy relationships based on respect and equality for all. So therefore, we recognize October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And coming forward, we'll receive it are Bree Otto, Anne Abashan, Irene Sheehan, Tina Johnson, and Marisol Romero. So please come forward.
The mayor has granted me a moment of personal privilege. Hope House was started, actually, as one of the initiatives of our first female mayor, Barbara Potts. And my sweet dad was on that very first Board of Directors, actually before Hope House even got started. So it is my joy that we get to celebrate your exceptional work today. Thank you.
And the next proclamation is, "The City of Independence is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all of those living in our city. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally. And homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. And whereas, fires have caused over 2,100 civilian casualties, or excuse me, fatalities, in the United States in 2023. According to the U.S. Fire Administration and fire departments in the United States, they responded to over 350,000 home fires last year. Whereas, smoke alarms can sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to the danger of the event of a fire in your home. And it gives you as little as, at least you'll have two minutes more, to escape. And whereas, working fire alarms can cut the risk of dying in response to fires by over half. And whereas, Independence residents should be sure everyone in their home understands the sounds of smoke alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas, the men and women of our fire department are dedicated to reducing the occurrences of fires through the prevention and protection education. And therefore, this proclamation will recognize 2024, this week, as Fire Prevention Week. Smoke alarms make them work for you. And with that, we'll have Chief Walker and Battalion Chief Michael, All right, that brings us to our citizen's request. And this will be John Eppert. Please come forward. And while John is coming forward, can I have a motion to allow non-residents to speak this evening?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to suspend the rules to allow non-residents to speak. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears.
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Vought.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland.
Yes. And the motion to suspend the rules passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Is John Eppert here? We'll hold John's spot. Eric Green, are you here to speak?
Present.
Please come forward, and the floor is yours. And you'll have five minutes if you
Hello. My name is Eric Green. I am a IPL Journeyman Lineman Crew Leader, the elected Union President, as well as the Union Steward for the Journeyman Lineman. I am speaking on behalf of myself, the linemen of IPL, and our support service members. The reason for me speaking this evening is on the subject of out-of-town requests for mutual aid and the refusal of participation in Hurricane Helene. The City of Independence is a member of the MPUA, the Missouri Public Utility Alliance, and was asked to stage for Hurricane Helene, which is already being called one of the most devastating hurricanes to hit the coastal U.S. and mainland. The damage is so significant that line crews as far away as Canada are participating in restoration effort. Out-of-town mutual aid is covered in our contract with the city in Article 8, Section 8, and it states, "Employees will be selected to respond to out-of-town requests for mutual aid on the following basis," quoting subsection C. "To be eligible for selection, working crew leaders and/or journeyman linemen must have responded and have worked a minimum of 50% of the call-out opportunities in-house received during the prior twelve rolling months. Eighty-eight percent of the crew leaders are eligible and meet these requirements, as well as 53% of the journeyman linemen, they have met these requirements as well. The reliability and award-winning service that IPL customers enjoy come from IPL linemen meeting this out-of-town mutual aid 50% requirement. The linemen at IPL are very upset for several reasons. First and foremost, we have friends and family that have been devastated by this natural disaster. Upon hire, every lineman is told, 'We do respond to out-of-town mutual aid requests,' and it is in our contract, as I stated earlier. The IPL linemen have kept up our requirements to respond to those in need during this specific event. Yet the city refuses to allow IPL to respond to those in need begging for our help. No official reason has been given as to why we are not allowed to respond. We sent crews to Orlando, Florida in 2022, and Jacksonville, Florida in 2023 with less staff than we have now, and the majority of our out-of-town hours have come from Florida. I am asking for answers as to why the city has turned their back on those people in need now. The linemen of IPL have sacrificed much to meet these 50% in-town call-out requirements, missing our children's soccer games, holidays, birthdays, and other important events, coming in at all hours of the night, working in horrendous weather conditions, and working sixteen-hour days consecutively to restore power here in town. Two linemen have quit over this already, and one more had an interview last week with Evergy, who did respond to Hurricane Helene. And more linemen will leave IPL over their refusal to participate in mutual aid. In 2021, IPL lost 50% of their TND department due to similar bad decisions, and IPL is still short four linemen from this exodus. There are rumors that the city loses money on out-of-town mutual aid. This is not true because the following MPUA cities are responding and being reimbursed by FEMA: Carthage, Columbia, Fayette, Hannibal, Herman, Higginsville, Kennett, Macon, Nixa, Odessa, Poplar, Bluff, and Springfield. And the linemen at IPL salute those MPUA-member cities and their linemen. I am simply asking for a reason, an explanation, as to why the city has refused the last several requests to participate in out-of-town mutual aid now, and as to why IPL linemen would maintain a 50% call-out rate or even continue employment with the City of Independence. Our prayers are with those families that have lost everything, with the firefighters, the linemen, police, EMTs, and other first responders that have left the comfort of their homes to diligently serve our great country. Thank you for your time. God bless you all, and God bless America.
Next up is Lee Phillips. And I think, thank you. And Lee, I think you have spoken on this before, so...
Not on this specific subject, I have not.
Okay. You'll have five minutes then.
Thank you kindly. Mayor, Council, Lee Phillips, Independence, Missouri, good evening. On October 21, 2024, you will be voting on ordinances 24097 and 24098, which propose the Inglewood Arts Overlay District, EAOD. This would impose a new zoning overlay on several neighborhoods, including mine. I respectfully urge you to vote no on both ordinances. Instead, I present an alternative, the Citywide Growth and Revitalization Initiative, CGRI. Both programs aim for neighborhood improvement, but their methods are fundamentally different. The CGRI is a voluntary initiative that empowers homeowners to decide what's best for their properties. It allows for the construction of accessory dwelling units, ADUs, smaller homes, home businesses, Airbnbs, and bed and breakfasts, if owners choose, without overlay or rezoning changes. Participation is optional. Residents can decide if this approach fits their needs. This respects property rights, is flexible throughout the city, and reflects the individuality of our neighborhoods. CGRI also aligns directly with the Citywide Housing Study, which highlighted the need for affordable housing options and diverse housing types to meet our communities' demands. The program addresses these needs, providing affordable homeownership and rental opportunities without compromising the existing character of our neighborhoods. In contrast, the EAOD introduces cluster developments that conflict with the fabric of most single-family residential areas in Independence. These high-density projects overlook the importance of larger yards, a feature many of us value deeply. Many of us chose to live in Independence for its spacious residential environment, where homes are set apart by generous yards and green spaces. CGRI, however, allows for cluster build applications on a case-by-case basis, following the city's current application process, ensuring these developments meet zoning requirements and respect each neighborhood's character. Importantly, each community gets to choose its own development path, preserving local values. CGRI, on the other hand, is designed to protect affordability. It targets low- and moderate-income families, ensuring homes don't exceed 30% of a household's income. It creates opportunities for both homeownership and affordable rentals, while helping to avoid the displacement that often accompanies gentrification. CGRI respects the character of our neighborhoods. Any new construction, whether small home builds, ADUs, or cluster builds, must meet clear design guidelines that preserve the integrity of the area. We can have growth without compromising the look and feel of our communities. But perhaps most importantly, CGRI is the most diverse, equitable, and inclusive option. It allows homeowners, renters, and families alike to engage in a way that works for them. The EAOD, however, imposes restrictions on specific neighborhoods without meaningful input from residents. It removes the choice and forces neighborhoods to conform to a set of rules that may not align with their needs. In conclusion, CGRI is a realistic, balanced path forward. It empowers neighborhoods, supports responsible growth, and fosters affordable housing solutions without the risk of gentrification or displacement. It's a program that respects the values of Independence, our neighborhoods, property rights, and community. I believe ADUs and smaller builds are beneficial, so why should they be limited to just one district? Why not offer them citywide? I urge you to vote no on ordinances 24097 and 24098, or at least table them to allow for further discussion. We recognize that dialogue is needed and have already reached out to the city for assistance in facilitating a meeting with Inglewood Arts. We are open to constructive discussions that lead to the best outcome for Independence. Let's take a moment to pause, ensuring all parties have the opportunity to agree on a plan that honors property rights, supports affordable housing, and lets communities shape their own future. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Next up is Bobby Bryant.
I'm Bobby Bryant. I live in Independence at 32nd and Queen Ridge. And I have sat in on several meetings and stuff lately, and I find that we're missing something. And it's the difference between the factual argument and the emotional argument. So, as the city, to help us, our citizens, we need facts. I'm not beating people about numbers, but the numbers give us a good idea. Everybody here works. You work all day, you get home, you make dinner, you have to run around with the kids. So, you've got to make it really, really clear, really, really simple, and digestible. And not everybody can come up here and talk. Not everybody can come up here and listen. Not everybody has the time to listen to all the council things. And the stuff is complex, but it doesn't always have to be. I mean, when we were doing the charter, there were so many changes. We should have taken it in small bites. The Inglewood Arts District, let's take it in small bites, something we can digest, maybe do a test run. Let's bring it down to where we're really serving the citizens, all of the citizens, and we're able to get them to make input. I mean, a lot of people are like, "I don't want to go up there and talk. I might sound dumb. I don't completely understand this." Lawyers and engineers don't necessarily understand this stuff after reading it. So let's simplify. Take it smaller and prioritize. I see, historically, we put the same areas, get the effort. But why are we going back? We've been on Winter Road, like, time and time again, Nolan Road, time and time again. There's other places that could use our help. Let's spread it out, and let's prioritize. Let's make the agenda the people, all of the citizens. And all the citizens need to understand that you may support District Four, and you came from District Three, you're at large, but it takes all of you guys to make a decision. So they need to be speaking to all of you. And speak up. I mean, just five minutes. I don't understand why you voted for that. Could you tell me why? Could you tell me what the background is that you understood because I didn't understand it? Communicate. Get their phone numbers, their emails, or online. Okay, you're online, playing games, spend some time, get online, and just, "Hey, I got a question today. John, can you answer this question for me? Thanks." All right? Just be informed. Be involved. We've got to step up. And as for other decisions, putting money into, like, a new building, and an aquatic center, and things like that, I know that sounds good to some people, but that comes out of general fund. And right now, you had police officers wanting to leave, and you had to pass a tax because you weren't paying them enough. You have IPL people wanting to leave because they're blocked from going and helping everybody else. And that's a really bad thing. That's a really, really bad thing. Because what if we need help next time? If we need help, and we didn't go, they won't come. Like, that stuff is reimbursed.
You have one minute, ma'am.
We made money in the past. I know. I was there. So, we have to step it down, make it simple, interact, prioritize, get back to the people, get back to the basic necessities, and let's fund it, support it, and work with it. We don't need fruit and fruit. We need the foundation put back. So, let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Teresa Dorsh. Is that, did I say that right, Teresa? Did I say that?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I, Teresa Dorsh, Inglewood resident and one of the EAOD applicants, would like to share that the supporters of the Inglewood Arts Overlay District at this time wish to be respectful of your time and recognize, due to all of the efforts over the last five years, that additional information may not be necessary at this moment. We're more than willing to answer any questions you may have or others and discuss the proposed zoning further. Thank you for your commitment to create a vibrant community in which people can live.
Next up is Kelly Duckworth.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Kelly Duckworth. Robert and Rosemary Hoover are my parents. I am here to speak in favor of ordinance 24094-1R, which approves the rezoning of a single lot at 2710 West Port Road to accommodate the two single-family homes that have existed there since before the area was incorporated into Independence and later zoned R6. These homes have been maintained and occupied under a legal non-conforming use certificate provided by the Community Development Department of the City of Independence. The certificate was recently revoked, and rezoning is our only option to accommodate these two pre-existing houses. There is no plan to develop or change anything. This ordinance costs the city nothing and allows the property in question to remain and maintain its value. It allows our tenant to stay in a home that she has made her own at a rental charge that she can afford. She wanted to come this evening, but because the Chiefs and Royals are both on, she had to work. So, I respectfully ask the City Council to evaluate this case and to grant approval of this minimal zoning change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Marjonne Brightenbach.
Good evening. I'm Marion Brightenbach, 1110 West Walnut. First thing I'd like to mention is there's a tax freeze that you can get if you're a senior 62 and over. There's a tax credit, JacksonCounty.gov. Go there, it's easy to do. I'd like to commend you guys. Thank you for the electricity that I have received. Thank you for the electricity that I've received. Individual property ownership is an inherent right, which is one of the foundations of liberty, individual liberty, for American citizens, and constitute an asset of unique value, our homes. Recognizing that value, we agree that all citizens' consent and their personal property rights should be placed at the highest priority and consideration during planning and rezoning I've been walking the district that represents the overlay district. It is disappointing to see most of the signs announcing the overlay district are no longer there. I would think that this is illegal. The signs should be maintained throughout the process. Most of the area is not even conducive to the overlay. This area is zoned single-family, and in good faith, this is how the people purchase their properties. I question the fundamental fairness of this overlay. Why should the minority be able to change the zoning that the majority does not support? Many people told me it is a waste of time to contact the council, because they will do what they want to anyway. There are two protest forms that are available from City Hall on their webpage. One form is for inside the overlay, and the other is for one hundred and fifty feet outside the overlay. You also have to get them notarized. You can get them notarized for free from the library or your bank. They need to be in before October seventeenth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kelly Riddle. Kelly? Is it, did I say that right?
Oh, it's probably me.
Help me with your first name, please.
Yvette.
Yvette, okay. Please forgive me there.
No problem. I'm sloppy in running, so I probably didn't help.
No worries.
Yvette Riddle, 1421 South Willow Avenue. Greetings, Council. Over the course of the last year or two, I have been to as many community meetings for the Inglewood Arts Overlay District as I have been aware of, two of which were about an hour, one was thirty minutes, and another was allotted a mere fifteen minutes for the issue. When I questioned why the overlay prohibited essential services like automotive repair, I became involved in protesting this overlay. Thankfully, just before the Planning Commission meeting in August, the EAOD removed that prohibition. With another neighbor, we walked and passed out protest letters to approximately nine hundred homes. We spoke to many people, all of whom were confused of what this overlay rezoning meant. I shared with them what I knew from the education that I received from the community meetings. I fielded a lot of great questions and concerns. One of them was regarding taxes. All of them were concerned that this meant an increase in taxation for them. I shared what I was told, which was it didn't mean extra taxes. However, it was brought up in the August Planning Commission meeting that the Inglewood Zone does have its own tax. I and many others that I spoke with are concerned that this overlay will eventually impose its tax on us, and it's real easy to connect those dots. We do not want extra taxes. Under the EAOD Section fourteen-nine-one-two-oh-one Purpose, Low-Intensity Neighborhood Supporting Businesses, et cetera, I am unclear what low intensity means. The Missouri statute, seven-one-point-nine-nine-zero, does not use the verbiage "low intensity." So I look to the inspiration for this overlay, Albuquerque. The definition there, and I quote, "Mixed-use low intensity allows for small-scale commercial activities and residential uses to coexist within the same area." In April's meeting with the Inglewood Arts, the occupancy for low-intensity businesses was defined to be tiny at twenty people or less. The Missouri statute, seven-one-point-nine-nine-zero, defines home-based business in Section One, Subsection Two, as "any business operated in a residential dwelling that manufactures, provides, or sells goods and services, and that is owned and operated by the owner or tenant of the residential dwelling." It then qualifies the activities of a "no-impact" home-based business if: "It does not cause a substantial increase in traffic through the residential area; does not violate any parking regulations established by the political subdivision; it occurs inside the residential dwelling or in the yard of the residential dwelling; and is not visible from the street." Section Four also states that reasonable regulations may be established on a home-based business to protect the public health and safety, sanitation, traffic control, waste, pollution, and noise. My understanding is low intensity means extra vehicle traffic, public parking, extra foot traffic, noise, and trash, to name a few. This appears to be in direct opposition to the Missouri statute. I refer you again to the purpose statement, and I ask you, the council, does that verbiage still exist in your document? For those of you with families, with children, and grandchildren, would you want extra public traffic coming to a place of business right next door? It sounds great at first, until it's an everyday thing. Art gallery homes and small eatery sound great, but children are playing in yards and riding their bikes in the street. So far, those I've asked when I handed out the letters have said no, absolutely not. All of that said, Missouri statutes already allow us to have home-based businesses that our neighborhoods supporting.
You have one minute, ma'am.
Why do we need the Inglewood Arts overlay? Why do our homes need to be rezoned for the overlay? I think we can all agree that tiny homes and ADUs are a great idea, so why not change the codes citywide for what is right and reasonable for each unique neighborhood? Why not allow that for all of Independence? I ask you to vote no for 24-097 and 24098, and yes to something that benefits all of the independents. Please consider CGRI. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brandon Schnurr. Is that right? Help me with the last name there, Brandon. Schnurr, thank you. And Brandon, you'll have five minutes, please.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, thank you. My name is Brandon Schnurr, an Independence resident. I'm also the head of the City Improvement District for the Inglewood area. And I just wanted to give my support for the overlay. I think there has been a lot of questions that have been answered. There's been a lot of concerns that are unprecedented, and I believe that there is a huge opportunity for people that want to be able to take advantage of it, to be able to give themselves back the opportunities that have been taken away from them for years, over years. And, you know, I want to be the kind of, I want to be in a city that allows people to build on their own property without the city having a say in it, as long as it's safe, obviously. I want to be able to live in a city that gives the opportunities for people to, you know, make income on their own property. I don't want the city to have a say in that as well, and I certainly don't want to be in a place where my neighbors get to dictate what I get to do on my own property. The information, I believe, that is, has been spread about this being a problem to the neighborhood, one is unprecedented based on the fact that the home businesses are part of city code already. That has nothing to do with the overlay. And I think I want to be in the kind of place that allows people to have the freedom to build and do the things that they want to do, as long as it's safe on their own property. So, thank you.
That brings us to the consent agenda. Please proceed.
I move for approval of the reports and recommendations of the City Manager.
Thank you.
I second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any items that any council members would like to pull for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Number seven, please. Yes, number seven, please.
Any other items, please? Going once, going twice? Okay.
Also, Mr. Mayor, may I, during this discussion, may I make a point of privilege to discuss the twenty-first with the public hearing?
Please, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the consent agenda, and then we'll discuss item number seven.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and the consent agenda is approved, seven in favor, zero opposed. And item number seven, seven was pulled for separate consideration. Councilmember Perkins, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Just a real quick point of public privilege. The meeting that's coming up on the twenty-first regarding the U8 UDO and also the overlay, that the UDO will be a full public hearing, so the thought and suggestion, instead of signing up to speak at the council meeting, you may be able to speak under the public hearing, just so you don't have to speak twice. You can do it all in one swoop. It will be a full public hearing for those who are for, and for those who are against. There will be no time limit. Just be courteous of everybody else's time, and we'll have a full public hearing on that. Thank you. Regarding the item that I pulled for the Winter Road Complete Streets, that is just a design contract, just put that in contracts, contrast just real quick. As we develop Northwest Independence, this is a considerable amount of money that we were awarded to. This small portion is just a design portion of that. That is a complete-street program that goes from Winter Road all the way up to the Inglewood Arts area, which will enhance that area once we do multimodal roads and enhancements. And we will look at the sidewalks, green spaces, drainage. And the most important thing that we will be doing, there's the full development of the Truman Gateway Plan that was put together in 2014, which will enhance Truman Road, Winter Road in front of Van Horn. That will give us a complete-street for the safety and the walkability of our students. So I'm in support of that, and I just wanted to get that out there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Can we have a motion and a second for item number seven, please?
I'll make the motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second on item number seven. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number seven.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and item number seven is passed, seven in favor, zero opposed. And that'll bring us to our regular agenda and our public hearings. And Madam City Clerk, please proceed on item number one, please.
A public hearing for the application to rezone the property at 2710 Southwestport Road from R6, single-family residential to R6/PUD, single-family residential/Planned Unit Development. New information only.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I would like to make a motion to postpone this for two weeks, just for more discussion. It's been complex, and so...
Okay, so we have a motion to postpone. Anyone?
Second.
A second? We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion to postpone?
Just point clarification. Are we postponing both the public hearing and the ordinance second reading?
I'm going to ask our acting City Councilor, ruling on that, if I could, please.
You could have the public hearing now because it was noticed. You could also notice it to a certain date, the twenty-first, and that would be fine.
Okay. So, and so really what we need is a motion to postpone both items, since they're both separately on the agenda. Would that be your recommendation, or can we just one motion?
You can do them both, you can do them both at the same time, but just make sure that the date is certain as to what date is being postponed to.
That way, we can make sure that we publish it.
Everybody knows what the date is, yes.
Appropriately. Okay. Very good. So...
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Are there people here to speak on the public hearing?
Great point.
That may be a consideration for this evening.
If this is new, sorry, Mayor.
Please proceed.
If this is new information only, there's no full public hearing, correct?
Correct, but if there's, I don't know if there's other people.
No.
There is no new information.
Okay. So we've got the motion on the floor to postpone item number one and item twenty-four-dash-zero-nine-four. Any further discussion on that? Any further discussion? Okay. So we have a motion to postpone item number one and item twenty-four-dash-zero-nine-four with no further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll. And it'll be postponed to the twenty-first. Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and item number one and item twenty-four-dash-zero-nine-four, both have been postponed to October twenty-first. That brings us to the ordinances. Madam City Clerk, please proceed with twenty-four-zero-nine-one.
Twenty-four-dash-zero-nine-one, second reading. An ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project for the Arabella Apartment Project, authorizing the City of Independence, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed thirty-nine million two hundred thousand, and authorizing certain documents and actions in connection therewith. Second reading.
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, could you explain what this is?
Yes, I would be happy to. So the council may recall, at the hearing for this item, a developer has started work on a multifamily housing development generally located in the area of Jackson Drive and RD Mize. As we have seen, economics have kind of shifted in the American economy lately and made material, construction material in particular, much more expensive, particularly than when this project was initially brought forward by the developer and approved. Typically, council would consider economic incentives at the time the project's being approved, but this is a situation where those economics shifted during the course of the construction of the project. So the developer is seeking a Chapter one-hundred tax abatement. What that is, that is a sales tax abatement, so any of the construction materials that would be purchased, the sales tax on that would be abated. I believe when Bond Counsel spoke to the council about this, they quoted the total fiscal impact of that at about a nine-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-dollar abatement. One of the things I think that's important to keep in mind, though, is that includes all sales tax. So the general sales tax rate in Independence is a little over seven and a quarter percent, seven-point-seven-five percent. The City of Independence is at two-point-five percent. So that full abatement amount that was quoted is not the sales tax that would be foregone by the city exclusively. That would include other taxing jurisdictions, particularly the state of Missouri. One of the reasons that staff feels confident in bringing this recommendation forward is that sales tax exemption is really a one-time waiver, again, on those construction materials, whereas we are going to be bringing in hundreds of residents to this area who will be paying utilities for electric, water, and sewer to the City of Independence, so those utilities will be supported. And then by virtue of the city charter, the city will get nine-point-zero-eight percent in a pilot payment to its general fund off of that as well. So the long-term revenue projections for this show this to be a net gain for the city as opposed to the one-time sales tax waiver.
Thank you. Is there any guarantee that they'll purchase the materials in Independence?
There is not. They have the capacity to do that wherever.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, just a question there. So we're not asking for any property tax abatement at all, or any periods of anything? It's all sales tax?
Sales tax and exclusively on construction materials.
So in addition to the pilot and the other things, we'll also, we'll get property tax from these properties going down?
All the taxing jurisdictions, including the city, will realize their full net gain in new construction off of the property tax.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion, questions? Please proceed.
My back-of-the-napkin math of our two-point-five percent is about two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars that the city would actually forego. So just clarifying that, the nine-hundred-and-seventy is the total amount of sales tax, but the impact to the city is two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand one time.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And that would be if, if it was all purchased inside the City of Independence?
If it were all purchased, but I would...
Which is probably not very likely.
I would, well, I would anticipate that developer's gonna go find the best deal they can.
Anyone else have a further discussion on twenty-four-zero-nine-one? Any more discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 24-091.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and 24-091 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 24-092. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-092, second reading. An ordinance approving petitions to add property to the Nolan Road Community Improvement District. Second reading.
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor? To inquire of the City Manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, I know we heard from Jerry Winship from the Nolan Road CID. Just for new people in the audience, can you remind them what we are adding to the Nolan Road CID and area?
Yes, this is a very small footprint within the CID from an aerial. It actually looks like a pennant flag. The area is generally located on the southwest corner of I-70 and Nolan Road. Five Guys is the probably closest business establishment to that. In order for the Nolan Road CID to further pursue construction of a monument marker welcoming people to Independence and the Nolan Road Corridor, this needs to be added into the CID because of state law's restrictions that CIDs can only spend money within their boundaries.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a further discussion on 24-092? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please proceed or please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and 24-092 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 24-093. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-093, second reading. An ordinance vacating an existing general utility easement, electric easement, and sanitary sewer easement, all part of 18785 East 39th Street South, lying in, on, and across tracks four and five of Independence Center, a subdivision in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. Second reading.
Any discussion on 24-093?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
To inquire of the City Manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, it is not common that we vacate easements, so can you explain the reasoning for this?
It's very important. Chick-fil-A would like to expand. So in order for them to have the territory that they need to do that, this is an easement that the city does not need, that we no longer have use of, but it allows a local business to go ahead and pursue their expansion.
And will they purchase that land from the city?
Let me check on that. No, this would be us deeding that to them.
Okay, and we no longer need it to run lines or sewer lines or anything in that particular space?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have a further discussion on 24-093? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and 24-093 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. Brings us to 24-095. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-095, second reading. An ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2023/2024 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19453. Second reading.
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. City Manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, to inquire of the City Manager. Mr. City Manager, I know that there are aspects of this that talk about the animal shelter.
That's correct.
So this is a building that is in this bizarre world where we own the land and the county built and owns the building.
Correct.
And unfortunately, the county has not been good about making the necessary repairs to that building even though they own it.
Correct.
The City of Independence, in order to keep it operating, has had to make the expenditures. Have we been successful in getting reimbursement from the county for those necessary expenditures?
The county has been invoiced for that, but the city has not received payment on those invoices as of yet.
Do we have the opportunity to perhaps look at a different arrangement? Because this complicated ownership arrangement has, I think, almost been strained from the beginning. May I request that you look at opportunities perhaps to find a way to deed the land to the county so they can maintain the building they possess or find some other solution so we are not continuing in this sort of complicated world of dual ownership? Now, this may not be possible, but I'd like to explore what opportunities we have.
We would be happy to look at that and make some recommendations.
Thank you. That's my only question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else have a further discussion on 24-095?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just real quick, Mr. City Manager, to continue with Councilwoman McCandless's thoughts. I mean, we have reached out to the county to ask for for a way for them to divest themselves from Independence, correct?
Yes, as has been very well documented. The county is sitting on at least $70 million of unspent federal COVID relief funds. That figure is estimated by some to maybe be a little bit higher because of the interest earned on those funds. But the point being, a number of requests have been made by both governmental and nonprofit entities for how to benefit the county in Jackson County with those funds. And one of those recommendations that was made to the county for those funds was that they would pay off the remaining debt on the shelter, which is about $5 million. And then under that arrangement, the city take ownership of the building and then have a singular governmental entity that was responsible for maintenance and operation. Again, that was a proposal that was made, but not one that has received a formal response back from the county.
So that brings up the next point. So they never even responded to the requests, correct?
Correct.
So we are trying, it's just haven't responded.
Correct.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion on 24-095, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and 24-095 passes seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-096, first reading. An ordinance approving the intergovernmental cooperative agreement between the City of Independence, Missouri and the Fairmount Community Improvement District. First reading. 24-097, first reading. An ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the City Code, adding Section 14-912, Inglewood Arts Overlay District. First reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Per my email that I sent over the weekend regarding the potential motion to amend under the purpose statement, under the Inglewood Arts Overlay District, I make the motion to strike other low-intensity neighborhood-supporting businesses and leave everything before that as is and leave everything after that as is.
Second.
So we've got a motion and a second, so for clarification purposes, if you can restate your motion so everyone understands and we're all clear.
Thank you. So the motion is to remove, under the purpose statement, other low-intensity neighborhood-supporting businesses?
Okay. And that would be, that would be all that was being struck?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'm gonna support the amendment. However, I just want to make it very clear that it should in no way indicate my vote when it comes to the second reading on the 21st.
Point well taken. Anyone else have a further discussion? Okay, this is the first reading. We're not doing the final reading this evening, but we can in fact do an amendment, and we've got a motion for that with a second. Any further discussion on the motion and the second standing before this body? No other discussion? All right, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and the item is amended, seven in favor and zero opposed. And Madam City Clerk, you can please proceed with the first readings.
24-098, first reading. An ordinance approving the overlay rezoning to EAOD, Inglewood Arts Overlay District, for the properties generally located west of Chrisler, north of 23rd Street, east of Brookside Avenue, and south of Truman Road. First reading. 24-099, first reading. An ordinance approving a rezoning from District R6 Single Family Residential to District I1 Industrial for the property at 21101 East N78 Highway. First reading. 24-100, first reading. An ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2 General Commercial and District R6 Single Family Residential to C2 General Commercial and R12 Two Family Residential for the property located at the southwest corner of Jackson Drive and RD Mize Road. First reading. 24-101, first reading. An ordinance approving a rezoning from District R30/PUD High Density Residential Planned Unit Development to R6 Single Family Residential for the property at 9300 East 9th Street. First reading. 24-102, first reading. An ordinance approving a rezoning from District I1 Industrial to R6 Single Family Residential for the properties at 1235 and 1239 West South Avenue. First reading. 24-103, first reading. An ordinance approving a rezoning from District I1 Industrial to C2 General Commercial for the properties at 11300 East Aaron Lane and 11301 and 11303 East Truman Road. First reading.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. That'll bring us to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Stewart, we'll start with you.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fears?
Just a quick comment regarding, there's been a fair amount of chatter about the terrorist crossing that is proposed. And I just want to clarify that all the council has done is to suggest that we're supportive of state funding on this. We haven't made any decisions, taken any other steps. There's a lot of hoops that they have to jump through before anything is, any approvals are given or any dirt is turned on this project. So I just want to clarify that, you know, nothing else has been done other than we are, have said that we are supportive of state funding on the project. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Vought?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to highlight an initiative between Independence and Kansas City, Missouri. During the week of September 23rd, 2024, city staff joined forces with Kansas City, Missouri in an effort to address the homeless camp behind the sandbar at 40 Highway. This group has over 20 partners involved. And during that week, different groups went out on separate, or three separate days to address the needs of those that were in the camp. As of September 29th, all individuals were cleared of the area. Throughout this phase, 25 individuals were connected to essential services and given resources, including Narcan hand sanitizer. Over 20 hygiene kits were handed out and along with five pounds of dog food. This initiative represents a new partnership with Kansas City, Missouri, and the hope of more effective approach to addressing homelessness in and around our community. Through this collaboration, we hope to provide comprehensive support services, foster long-term solutions, and create a safer environment for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you, Mayor. Saturday, I spent the morning at Carrington Woods, which is a subdivision in my district, and spoke to their homeowners association. And I want to thank them for inviting me into their beautiful neighborhood. It was a really beautiful morning and it was great to meet so many people. And I want to add to the discussion on the animal shelter. I think it's important to note that our animal control officers patrol and work in unincorporated Jackson County. So our animal control officers are responsible for that part of Jackson County. And it's a worry for me because if they need assistance, they can't call IPD. They have to rely on the sheriff. And so I would urge anyone who's listening from the county to answer our letter so that we can, so we can get this resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember McCandless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We recently had the Women of Distinction celebration where a number of fantastic women in the community were recognized for their service and commitment to Eastern Jackson County. I'd like to make a special call out to Lisa Reynolds, our Director of Municipal Services, who was recognized that day. And also to Lori Dean Wiley, who is the Chair of our Planning Commission, who also was recognized that day. And if you have the opportunity, go back and look through. It's just a group of women who work extremely hard on behalf of their neighborhoods and communities. Also like to give celebration for our through-new officers who were commissioned this week. All of them came from different backgrounds, some from military, some from our 911 system, and went through school, and so we were delighted to be able to commission them. And then looking forward to celebrating with all of you as chiefs and royals continue to do well for our community. And I know Mr. City Manager is going to address some of the questions that came up earlier, so I will leave that for now.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you. Just real quickly, I too was at the Women of Distinction, and that was a great turnout. And Independence was very well represented, and I'm counting seven women that were recognized. And I had, Shirley Baker was awarded Woman of the Year. I had the privilege of, when I first got on the council, cutting my teeth with her husband, Bill Baker, back in the day, and boy, did I cut my teeth with him. But it was great, it was great to be there. And congratulations, Lisa, for that, well deserved. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. And I'll make it really relatively short, too. I was also at the Women of Distinction. And please, congratulations, Lisa, for your nomination to that and to Shirley Baker for winning or being selected as Woman of the Year. That was pretty extraordinary. She's played such an important role in our city for a long, 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 long time. And then also met with some folks from Kansas City and Independence. There was a business near 40 Highway in Phelps about a month ago that had an open-air concert. And so those folks wanted to get together. Folks from Kansas City and from Independence were there. I want to do a shout-out to Mayor Pro Tim Rena Parks Shaw, Parks Shaw from the City of Kansas City. She attended and she spoke very eloquently about the joint issues that we share with that area and had a great discussion. They're also talking about, and I know, Mr. City Manager, we've talked about this, 44th Street, seeing if there's any way to have some speed bumps in there because it is now becoming named I-44, and that's not good. So, but we can talk about that and address that concern. But that's all I have for tonight. Mr. City Manager, I know you've got a number of things that are on your agenda that you wanted to address, so please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. In the interest of time and to not be that guy that keeps everybody from getting to the various Kansas City events tonight, I'll just keep it limited this evening. You know, there was some commentary tonight about response to mutual aid in the southeastern United States. I want to start by saying that's not lost on me. I've watched with great heartache seeing what's happened in the southeast and certainly as that area braces for another storm. We continue to monitor that and will make decisions on a day-to-day basis about how to provide the best support we can to what's really shaping up to probably be some serious humanitarian crisis. But I do, since it was asked, you know, what the logic is behind that, I thought that would be appropriate to share. Before I begin, I do want to share that I've had email correspondence with IBEW Local 53 Business Representative. He asked about some of the rationale. I shared that, shared his perspective. Good back-and-forth conversation that I hope is being shared with...
conversation that I hope is being shared with those members as well. Um, you know, it wasn't that long ago, um, that this council chambers was full of, um, folks who were rightfully upset about the use of overtime in our organization. Um, that particular been, of course, highlighting the Police Department, but the third-party investigator who looked into that issue noted what he termed pension padding, uh, in the City of Independence. As a reminder, the city participates in the statewide loggers retirement system, and as a city employee, part of that calculation that determines how much you'll earn in your retirement years is your three highest earning years in your last ten, and what that investigation found was that in some places without restrictions, there's a practice to bump up your earnings through use of overtime, uh, to earn a higher payout, uh, in your, in your retirement years. Um, the council in two thousand and twenty-two, um, in September of twenty twenty-two, I should say, in response to that, adopted Resolution sixty-eight sixty-two, which put some guardrails in place about, uh, how overtime was paid. Um, and, you know, really made a statement, um, particularly as we found in that year, um, the city had paid five million dollars in overtime for about a hundred and forty thousand hours of overtime work that year. Um, you know, Mr. Mayor, I've also heard since I came to the city in two thousand and twelve that we need to do everything we can to keep our rates affordable for our residents. Several speakers tonight throughout their comments referenced affordability, um, and making sure the city is a wise steward of its resources. For context, in these mutual aid events, it's typical that linemen will work sixteen-hour shifts, um, either getting paid double their hourly rate, the base rate is fifty-three oh three an hour, so a little over a hundred and six dollars an hour, or time and a half, um, with eight hours paid for what's known as a rest period, which is exactly what it sounds like. If one individual did that one time in their last three years, that is going to increase their lifetime loggers benefit by sixty thousand dollars. The issue, um, to further expand that, though, is that these are typically five-person crews, a supervisor and four linemen, so multiplied by five, that's just short of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, that bumps that. The city is reimbursed for the hours worked, um, in these mutual aid events, uh, for the meals, um, things of that nature. We are not reimbursed for the long-term, um, post-employment benefit liability that the city absorbs. And just as information, the city is currently mandated by state law to make the maximum increased contribution every year because of the city's ever-growing pension liability, so dollars that aren't going towards day-to-day services, but are instead being put into the retirement system. Um, you know, I would further go on to say that if this were a, a practice, you know, the last three years where we, you know, you just went on one event, but the last three years, using the same five-person, um, formula, that would have a total impact of nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars on long-term impact. So I, I just want it to be understood, and if we want to have a conversation about different philosophies, but between directives to keep rates affordable and to help minimize this pension padding issue, that is what has informed the logic up to this point. I, I think it's also important to just clarify the narrative. It was said that, you know, in twenty twenty-one, we lost linemen because of this issue. Um, anyone is welcome to do an open records request of my emails, but the correspondence I got in twenty twenty-one said that that was in response to, um, the COVID dollars that were handed down, uh, to, um, help stimulate the economy. Evergy was paying a thousand dollars a month bonus, and we had five of our linemen, uh, that I recall leave for that. Um, in response to that, um, the city negotiated and paid a four thousand dollar bonus for every six months of employment, uh, for a two-year retention period. So we tried to respond to what we saw as the crisis in that time, which was the market competition. Um, so again, happy to have these conversations, assessing this situation on a day-to-day basis, but trying to be responsive to the past directives I've gotten, particularly in regards to rate affordability and long-term cost control for the city. Mayor, I have, uh, no other comments this evening.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Okay, with that, we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.